It's the RBC, which was from the meeting of the 11th.
Yeah.
Oh, but Jason needs to sign it.
And something Dave Burris has asked him to sign.
All right, we've got two guys for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and republican republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's an inevitable...
All right, quote-unquote. It's Monday.
All right, so I gave you guys the overview last meeting, so let's just get right into it with any questions or changes or whatnot.
Did Tom have any comments?
Not that he told me, no.
What?
Tom, did you have any comments on the budget?
I already reviewed this with Nancy, and the answers that I told him were in fact correct.
Okay.
So he's in good shape. But I double-checked with Nancy to make sure that I wasn't telling him anything. And he'll be back in time for the budget here.
I mean, it could be a short meeting.
Right. The contract with, I haven't looked at it, I think we got it back? Texted us?
Texted us.
It's back, yeah, yeah. She got it.
Right, I thought so, I just haven't had a chance to look at it, but I know that was one thing that's added to the budget. The prices are pretty much the same, he's not crazy.
Yeah.
So I budgeted, that is.
Okay.
I was wondering about sidewalk reserve fund. They're first, and I looked for it, and I didn't have...
Nancy, where is it?
The what?
Sidewalk Reserve.
The reserve funds aren't in here.
Okay.
So they're just these funds accounts.
So I guess my question then is, I know it's a tight budget, since we talked about that, but can we put anything in the sidewalk reserve fund?
Well, there is one thing that's in here that we may not need. I left in the $15,000 for master plan review.
Mm-hmm.
But if we want to have our staffer do it, we have that money to use.
I want to go back to sidewalks.
Yeah. Yeah, we're still on sidewalks.
We're still on sidewalks.
Yeah, we're still on sidewalks.
We got a sidewalk grant last year, gang. And as far as I know, we haven't done anything with it, and I don't want to lose the grant. Where are we on implementing the grant?
Brogan, when she gets in this week, is going through the paperwork, because we found that Brendan partially completed it, and Brogan was going to finish it, so I'm going to talk to Brogan tomorrow.
Okay, when is the grant? Do we lose the grant if we don't use the grant?
I'd have to look that up, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look that up, I don't even know off the top of my head.
Well, let's get it done.
We don't meet our deadline to do it.
Pardon?
If we don't meet our deadline to the paperwork, then there are any problems.
Well, but we got the grant over a year and a half ago.
We had our first meeting in December, I think it was. We had our meeting in December with DOT.
Okay, so this is now March.
So that's not, it's not a year and a half, so we're probably okay, so...
We're still okay with the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, if the meeting is this past December, it's not a year, it hasn't been there.
Call me tomorrow, and I'll have more details for you.
Let's just get it implemented.
That's the plan.
That was my question.
But, back to Ariana's question. Can we put some money into the Sewer, Sewer Sidewalk Reserve Fund? Well, yes, we can. Right, or what is it, right, 1.44% increase? And a 1% increase is what?
Uh, 10%.
Okay. What were you looking to put into the sidewalk reserve?
I mean, I figured that was something that we could, we could bid at the table and see what we could afford to do.
Well, why don't we do anything we think we can save and see where we end up first? And then, at the end of the meeting, go back and do that.
Okay.
Yeah, where are we with, because this is going to be where the money's going to come from. Where are we with the live wiring?
We have not received a proposal yet. They are aware that our deadline to have it completed is June 1st.
But wouldn't it be good to know? I don't want to do anything plain until I know whether we're going to be able to do this, and within this year's budget.
I'm hoping that we'll have our proposal from him very shortly. He was here a week and a half ago. I'm hoping that by giving until Thursday, which I think was two weeks, they'll have their proposal as they have stated.
Now, for the, another place that I would... The planning board and the ZBA. How much did we actually end up putting in for the attorney for the planning board?
It was $4,000.
And it was how much last year?
About the same.
I think it was three.
No, it was four.
Did we increase it to four?
It was four last year.
Four? All right, I would like to suggest that we think about putting another thousand into that, into the attorney for the planning board especially, because...
Another thousand, you said?
Yeah, and make it 5,000, because, one, I'm hoping that the planning board will take on the design standards. I didn't, I remembered what it was, but it's in the back. What number am I looking for, Nancy?
Eighty twenty.
Hmm?
Eighty ten and eighty twenty, ZBA.
Eighty seventy, yeah. Just let me get there. Okay.
I'm sorry, we have $25,000 for master plan, not 15.
Hmm?
We have $25,000 in here for master plan, not 15.
For?
Master plan.
Okay, right. What I was going to suggest is that the 46, $4,000, $680 that we have in for the videographer, when we only put in 1815 last year for the planning board, reducing that...
But they have two meetings a month now. They didn't always have two meetings.
All right, even multiplying. I still have $1,000 left. And I would suggest we move that up to the attorney and make that retainer 5,000. Reason being is my understanding that we are getting two proposals for two hotels. Right? Isn't that what we were told?
Yes.
And we are also going to ask them to take up, I hope, the design standards, get that finished, and they will be responsible for implementing that. So I would like to suggest that we increase the attorney to 5,000. And take 1,000 out of the videographer.
So you're just shifting money in that?
I'm shifting money rent. Do people agree with that?
Well, we need to make sure they have enough for two meetings a month. What is it for a meeting?
Well, if we get the live wiring, you know.
Right, well, if we get the live wiring, we eliminate this altogether.
Then we don't need the others at all, but I want to just leave them.
The live wire.
We just want 50, but not...
Right.
Oh, Ellison. It's $195 per meeting, and then $1.50 per paper. Bill Walton, yeah.
So I think we could do it. Because that would, if I double it, that would make it $3673,670, and there's $4,680 budgeted, that's $1,000 I can take away and shift up the other way.
$195, $60.
We can just shift it this way.
Double that figure, please.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that figure is right.
Okay.
It should be.
Yeah. Well, I got $6,000 if we're going for meetings.
I don't think every month they have two meetings. Boy, we're going to have to everything.
So just double, that was one meeting last year a month.
But they change.
So just double it. And that gives you 1,000 extra, and I'll shift that up.
Yeah, I would imagine also, as we do during the holiday months, I doubt that they would have two meetings.
There are less meetings, yeah. Then the exact twice a month, December is probably one.
Right, but I'm thinking more of what they've got coming before them.
Right, I'm all in on that thinking, yeah.
So that's why I want to do that.
All right, any objections?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
And we are also increasing...
Now, the question is...
Wait, what was that Rebecca?
I just, I know we're shifting the secretarial expenses to increasing that.
Yeah, we are, to what?
She appears under planner, too.
Right.
Oh, 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 I see.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's a problem. But under the ZBA, do we want to do anything about giving that? I can't find my tab. Putting more into that attorneys.
We have 3,000 there.
We have, how much?
Three.
That, that.
That sounds fine, yeah.
That's, I think it is, yeah, I think we're okay there.
Plus, there's also a USA video line in there, too.
Yes.
You want to see it?
Thanks, I... Oh, yeah. We've got a lot of money now.
Yeah, I think we're pretty safe.
I would suggest we do the same thing, move 1,000 from video up to the ZBA attorney.
Why does video increase so much from last year?
Because they increased their number of meetings.
Oh, 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 right, because last year...
They only meet one, once a month, the ZBA. But more, and we don't have all the bills in there, and I don't know what balance went, was paid by escrow, but the bid to Mohawk would have taken a lot of legal time. So I think we're safer putting 1,000 more in there.
Because these numbers are not coming out, right? Nancy, so there's $195 per meeting? Plus $60?
No, $195, that's, $195 is total.
Okay.
Unless they go over a little bit.
So $195 times 12, 25, 35.
These are Brogan's numbers.
So they haven't even budgeted for 12 meetings with the video?
The ZBA doesn't always meet every month, they learn.
Yeah.
Sometimes they don't.
But can we reduce it by 1,000 when we...
You're staying in the same contractual lines, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay. It just matters for the worksheet.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do with the budget?
So we're going to shift, do we agree to shift the 1,000 that way?
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
I don't know, I think we should budget for enough meetings and enough law. I mean, if we need to increase the budget by $1,000, we may have to do that. I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we budget enough so that they have the money in there to fill in their meetings as well as the video. And shifting it from one to the other without making sure the cover of the...
But my point is...
The television is...
We're going to have savings in the planning.
What do you mean in the planning?
Well, if you go to the municipal planner, okay, you have $25,000 in for master plan consultant.
Really?
We are doing that jointly with the town.
No, I know, I know, I'm talking with the ZBA.
Oh, but I'm saying there's enough money. We're not going to touch that, so...
I think we have enough in the ZBA line, because we're 83% into the budget, and there are only 41% in their expenses.
Even with everything they've been doing. Okay, as long as we have enough, I just want to make sure people don't, you know, want to rob the seat of the pay-pall.
I agree, but I don't, on the other hand, there's no point in fifth, there's no point in not shifting if we know we're not going to need something and if we will need it somewhere else. So, and we're only shifting within, we're not touching the bottom line at the moment. Rubbish and refuse.
What number?
8160 is the code. Okay. The Big Belly is installed. That will reduce garbage pickup. And we are, I do not think, if, on a Monday, garbage was picked up first thing in the morning, we do not need weekend garbage pickup, especially with the Big Belly compactor, and we have a second one in the budget, I think we're going to see a considerable savings. I would like to suggest that we lower, well, that we just get rid of the SWDS. Okay? We do not need an outside contractor picking up garbage.
It's recycling, this is the reason.
Pardon?
This is the recycling that come in, but now that you have the Big Belly in.
Well, it's only one.
Also, I don't know, I'm very hesitant to do that.
So, huh?
Because had the Big Belly been installed last, you know, July, and we were able to see what the difference was, I'd be willing to go down this road now. But I think that because it was just installed, we don't really know what that savings is going to be, and we could do this next year, not this year.
But my point is this, we're paying overtime, okay, on a weekend, for 15 minutes, but because of our contract, it's two hours...
Two hours, I know.
For two people, and that's a lot of money that we could save. So it seems to me we could do one or the other. We could get out of SWDS and let our team, if you want to keep them for the weekend, pick up the recycling and the garbage. And I'll go along with what you're saying, Ariana. But I don't think we need both. So which one do you want, overtime or...
Yeah, I don't think that's the distinction, I think we do need both. Because then we'd have to have our guys sort the recycling.
You have to do what? They can take it.
Well, for one thing, I'm not comfortable changing that without talking to Blue first.
But then, will you do that?
Well, I think you should talk to Blue if you want to, if you want to eliminate it and see if it can be eliminated, but I'll talk to him as well.
Okay, but it just seems to me, this is an area where part of our issue is that 15 minutes, okay, then two hours, for 15 minutes. That says to me, there's not that much to pick up, and we...
Where do we get the 15 minutes from?
Because that's what we've been, we were told last year, it takes about 15 minutes, but by contract, we know we have to pay two hours, because it doesn't matter. But if you spend an hour, you get paid for two. If you spend a half hour, you get paid for two hours, because that is the way our contract is. It's not just overtime on a salary, whatever timeframe it is. And I think, you know, to spend six, well, to spend over $11,000 on that combination is wrong. That's money we could use elsewhere for better things, like a new bench over in Peace Park. Yep, I would talk to Blue. But I agree with Ariana, we haven't had it in place like we had hoped, to really get a good, solid deal for how much we're going to save in terms of the compactor.
Right, okay, see what Blue says.
All right, so what else?
I don't have many things.
Yes, I know.
I was going to put in, into the sewer fund redoing the lead beds, because they're at the end of their life, but apparently things have changed, and now the DEC doesn't like us using correct mighters. So Blue and I are looking to see whether there's even something we can do in that department, but it doesn't look very good.
Are you in sewer?
I'm just jumping around, but what's...
Can we finish general? Might I ask, we have a arborist, but...
What number?
K3. A8560. Okay, this is shade tree, this shade tree commission and trees, the blue. Okay, we have $2,700 budgeted for an arborist. That is unnecessary, given the shade tree commission.
Don't we need one to maintain tree city? Don't we need one to maintain a tree city dismission?
Good question, do we?
There is something, but I'm not sure if you need that arborist on paper. We have to have a certified arborist available, I'm not sure. That's a Blue's question.
David Gates is...
David Gates is a certified arborist.
I'm not so sure you have to have one in your budget. I think there just has to be one, like there's one commission, so...
Would you want to ask Blue about that one, he might know.
All right.
Or Heather would probably know.
Because it seems to me, I mean, if we want to throw that money into more trees, because there are a lot of trees needing replacement, that would be fine, but I don't want to...
And we budgeted $2,000 more than last year for trees.
Yes, we did. Mm-hmm. But the shade tree commission, I have to tell you, has been doing a fabulous job, and they're right on top of things, and they've been doing a lot of planting, and they've been doing a lot of planting of native plants. It's a really good group of people.
Oh, absolutely. I have no problem with that arborists.
They don't always get the process, but they're tree huggers. Tree huggers don't know the process. They do, they really do a great, great job.
Sally, don't I take offense to that last comment?
I think it's everything I had.
Would you guys have anything Sally didn't mention?
I think, you know, I've gone through these a few weeks ago and pretty much asked questions about things that I had questions about, so I'm...
And again, I want to publicly... Very briefly, I want to know, it's a very good budget.
Thank you. Apparently, there's no questions.
Well, I hope, you know me, I owe you that stuff.
You'll just make one up.
But can we do sewer and water? And figure out how we're going to...
Well, yeah, give everything, if you have questions about whatever font, sewer, water, general.
Well, I'm just have a general concern that we have got to be very careful here. And I do have one question, I think. Okay, and that is, I don't think we need an $18,000 piece of equipment that I saw floating around here somewhere for a bobcat. Now I have to figure it out.
It's 5010.
What is it?
5010.
F.
Five, zero, one, zero. It's in the AMG fund.
It's in, I saw it in three different places. It's in the F fund, the G fund, and the A fund.
5010.
Okay. It's divided up. And I'm not sure if we need that. Bond where? Look at me, that's funded.
I might just work from that team.
See, did you find it? It should have noted on my...
He said 5010.
Hmm? It's in...
51, no. Oh, there you go.
You took it in the A fund. Maybe that's where, I'm not sure.
And that's under supplies, right?
Oh, I did, that's where I marked it.
Here are the equipment.
No, I'm not, I couldn't find it.
$100 boxes, which sounds special.
Okay. An 18-inch planer? An 18-inch planer, high-flow attachment for the bobcat.
I can't remember what that is.
Sounds like another Blue question.
But it also is in three different accounts.
Well, that's, that's usually properties.
We have more equipment. Speaking of which, I saw that the town was going to go out for bid for a leaf picker-upper. Couldn't we, we have a leaf picker-upper. Couldn't we do some kind of shared service there?
Possibly, unless we use it at the same time.
Oh, there's Blue.
So we have other things to...
Another, this is all Blue. But it seems to me, we bought one fairly recently. Why is the town buying one if we've got one and we could share?
Good question.
Share, leafer, that's what I'm going to call it, and then I'm going to wonder what it means with town, and I'm asking Blue about the 18,000. Three funds. What is an eight, can somebody tell me what that is, a planer?
I can't remember.
I don't remember.
Okay, I'll just call it an 18-inch planer. Okay. My only concern about, they're getting very heavy into the water indebtedness, and I think we're going to have to be very careful.
What, you mean because of our bond?
Well, everything we're doing.
I get that for me, that war on the company for USDIs. I have a feeling, I have a feeling the planer may be something along the lines of a chipper.
That, I wouldn't think you're right, I mean, but we'll find out. But it just seems to me that we, we did a lot for the DEP, we haven't gotten all that money back.
Yeah.
That concerns me. There's some thought that the village should borrow another million dollars for the DEP, and I don't think that's our responsibility.
I spoke to Tom, he said that's for the reservoir, our reservoirs, to expand them out or something for the water. That has nothing to do with the town, Tom told me, it's all for the village.
So this is for our expansion and the filtrations and all of that. But what assurance are we going to have that they're going to pay us back?
Just the contract that we have with them.
I think the contract is going to be very tight. I mean, because, you know, we all thought they were paying for the cost of borrowing and bonding, or borrowing.
Right.
And then they turned around and said, no, we're not. So, and we owe a lot of money to Dave Clouser, and we haven't been able to pay him, and we should not be borrowing money to pay him. They should be paying back what he is owed. I think it's very unfair to him and to his subcontractors that they haven't been paid. I don't think that's right, but I don't think it's our responsibility when they still owe us the money to shell it out to him.
Right.
I mean, that's not fair to our taxpayers. So I don't know how we're going to handle that. But I'm just, I just overall am a little concerned about, you know...
Nancy, we don't have to raise, talk about raising rates.
Not yet, but well, next year, we can find some kind of solution. Because you have to, in fact, and this year, we didn't put any money into borrowing from the $4 million budget. Next year, we'll have to.
Right.
We'll be borrowing, probably in June. So that's going to be another $200,000.
And when was the last time we raised rates? It's been seven years.
It was like three years ago.
That's when we did.
Hasn't been that long. Unless we look at other ways of cutting some expenses, which I think you're going to have to.
Now, this is Mark Blauer, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or someone else we hired theoretically.
Well, but I mean, it's for water and sewer. And does he, if, say we got a million-dollar grant for us, does he get a percentage on top of that?
Who?
Mark Blauer.
No, he just gets paid his administrative fees.
Okay. And... And what? Well, uh, this is really a dumb question, I believe, but I'll ask it. What does our team do at the water plant that isn't covered by the contract we cover?
Something.
Well, we have a company that runs-
Environmental consultants, yeah.
Correct. Okay, why do we have so much of our employee time there?
Water leaks, I think.
Is that, does that cover windbreaks and all of that? It's not up there, okay. Alright, good. And our service contract has increased quite a bit? Or not?
With environmental?
Mm-hmm.
It goes up, like, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think between like six, four, six percent a year. I'm not a hundred percent sure, we have to look at it.
I mean, is there a reason that we don't periodic, I think they do a great job, but is there a reason that we don't periodically bid that out?
We should. Yeah, I agree.
I think it's because they do a good job and they're running it so long.
But auditor, auditors do a good job and it is always recommended that occasionally, you can't. Or you at least bid out to see if you're doing better, the same thing for an engineer. I mean, Brinear and Larrius has been our engineer for how long?
Fifty years.
Fifty years, and you can't get a retainer contract from them?
Okay, we'll have that.
I have asked for it the last year and a half, and all I get from anybody is the hourly salary that they charge. That's not a retainer. We have a retainer with our attorney, I think the engineer should have a retainer boat, two retainers, one for general engineering and one for water and sewer. I mean, they make a lot of money off the Village of Newpaws. No, other people may not feel that way, so.
Well, I, I think, um, I think the two are, would be good questions for Will. The, um, engineer contract as well as the, um, water treatment plant.
A good question for him, okay. I mean, you know, it's easier just to go with the group you have.
Yeah.
But I think after fifty years of business from the Village of Newpaws, we should maybe be-
We've talked about this, absolutely, I agree.
And I'm, you know, I've, I've talked about it, I just think it's good business practice for us to seek a retainer from them. That's it for me for budget. Again, good job.
Thanks.
I have one other question, I'm sure if you could go back to, um, the, um, I was just wondering what segment we're getting in the border trustee's line? For six thousand dollars.
Where is the area? The very first. In water and sewer?
In general trustee's.
No, I should go back to it.
Oh.
Um, it's a point four, not a point two. It's just a long slide.
What?
It's just the sixty-six hundred?
Oh, yeah.
It's a contractual.
Oh.
Probably, yeah.
Uh, okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Alright, great, um, so we'll get these half dozen questions answered.
Am I getting them answered or are you getting them?
I'm getting, I'm getting the ones from, from Will, I'll get the, the two from Will.
They're, okay, from Will.
And you get the three from-
And I'm doing the Blue.
The, yeah.
Did you wanna shift any money from the planner and decide on this one, so I can show it in the budget?
I think we'll leave it where it is until we know more.
What do you guys think? The twenty-five thousand we have for master plant consultant, do we wanna shift that somewhere or wait, Sally said she wants to wait until we know more.
Um, yeah, I think it's probably better to wait, we can always shift it.
We don't have an inter-municipal agreement with the town yet to do it the way we wanna do it, I think we oughta wait. Just to be on the stage.
So, so can we, do we wanna talk about this on Wednesday again?
I don't need to.
Um, or do we wanna set the public hearing on the budget?
I think we could do that and also just, um, Tom may have further questions.
You want the questions answered before the public hearing or would you-
We may as well open the public hearing because why not?
Yeah, I mean, these really-
Give everybody more time.
These are only gonna be savings, so.
Alright, so do we wanna do it at our, at our first meeting in April then?
What, the public hearing?
Public hearing on the budget?
Yeah.
Finally made?
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, so moved?
Second.
Oh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's gonna be the first, do we wanna do?
Yeah, 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 I think he would.
We can always hold it open.
You have to have it done by April fifteenth, though.
April fifteenth?
The public hearing, though.
You have to hold it prior to April fifteenth and then close it down.
Okay.
But we could have the first hearing, keep it open as Jason said, close it and adopt it and make the changes on the fifteenth, or whatever date that is.
But we don't have a meeting on the public hearing and then you can make the changes and then adopt the budget by May first.
By May first?
We just have to have the public hearing closed by April fifteenth.
Right.
So you couldn't hold it open to the second meeting in April?
Right.
So we should have scheduled the public hearing for the twen, for our meeting this Wednesday?
If we wanted to, yeah.
Wouldn't we?
Your public hearing cannot be no later than April fifteenth.
When we're having it.
So you're having it on the eighth and you'll probably end up showing it that night anyway. You usually do.
Pause.
Well, you have another meeting the week after.
Yeah.
When are our meeting dates in April?
The eighth and the twenty-second.
Yeah.
So we're too late, we can adopt it on the twenty-second, but we can't keep the hearing open till the twenty-second.
Public hearing has to be done prior to April fifteenth. Oh, and not be on April twentieth, you cannot hold it past April twentieth. So, for some reason, we feel like we need-
We can set a special meeting.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
Why don't we just see what happens, see how many people have found out?
If after that, I mean, no one is expecting two hearings, are they?
No.
They never have to.
So, why don't we have our first public hearing April eighth?
Yep.
And if there is a big problem that we aren't aware of, then just hold it open for a special meeting.
You have to have it prior to April fifteenth, you can hold it open no later than April twentieth.
Right.
Right.
Alright, so I will talk to Will about if there's anything special I need to know for noticing purposes. Very, I see that resolution, so we'll get that.
And then, on the second meeting in April, we would resolve to adopt it, set salaries, the salary thing that we do, and any modifications or amendments.
And you can modify this budget up to make those first, uh, my schedule, as you guys are ready.
Right, but nothing we have done is an add-on to the budget, except sidewalk reserve fund.
Which we haven't talked about yet.
Shall we talk about that for a minute?
Well, I think we, we all agree that we're gonna wait until, wait until the, these questions are answered.
Yeah, exactly.
But, okay, let's go back, it's a second. Do we know what's in the sidewalk reserve fund at the moment?
There's twenty-two thousand, like ten thousand coming in, so you don't have thirty, like, thirty-one thousand.
And last year, we had a reserve fund of thirty-five thousand.
I, you had twenty-one thousand or twenty-two thousand, and then ten thousand coming in.
We took it up and then spent some.
We did, but then we spent some, yeah.
So, what, what's your thought, thirty-five?
I mean, I was looking to see it go back up to thirty-five, yeah.
See, I would, I don't mind, we have twenty-one now.
I would, certainly.
So I wouldn't, I mean, if we found and we could, if we found we had some extra money, we could move to transfer it to the reserve fund. And I would rather do that because I really want the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar sidewalk done, implemented, and spent. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, well, I think that's why we're all saying we should wait to talk about it, to see what we have, what transpires in the next few weeks and what we have.
Right, cause if we can generate some savings here, or even in the middle of next year, you guys could.
Right.
Not you and me, but.
Maybe.
Not. This one, that one, or this one. You're on your own, Rebecca.
No, I'll bring Tom in on this.
You and Tom. So, would you prefer more comfortable to take care of it before the budget cycle ends here and get it back up to thirty-five? Is that what you're aiming for?
I mean, I don't, I, I don't feel, I feel like we, you know, if there's any leftover that we can put in, then sure.
We wanna wait and see what the budget will say.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm wondering if Ariana has a magical number.
I mean, I think thirty-five is reasonable.
Okay, so we've got, it's about fourteen, we would need to take it to its, alright.
I mean, a truly magical number would be much, much larger so that we can actually put sidewalks everywhere, but that's, you know.
Two million, three million.
Right, that's not what we're, we're able to do right now.
I'm sorry, there's more grand money out there.
Exactly, yeah, so if we have at least some, I'm about to do some, I'm gonna work with it too, that would be good.
Question, is Brogan writing grants for us?
Not at the moment, I don't know where.
I mean, that's what we added the extra hours for.
Totally blanking. I'm trying to think if there's a specific grant that she was looking at.
You had her looking at some nicer grants, people over from my office that day.
Yeah.
You had her looking for energy efficient windows and things like that.
I mean.
I was just looking at my notes, I can't recall what happened.
I remember, sure, my office did all of it.
But the thought was, Bren, Bren got us three grants while she was here.
Mm-hmm.
And, with my understanding, Brogan was gonna pick up with those three extra hours we gave her.
And she didn't work with Bren on those grants.
And she's been working, and that's what Bren said, that she knew what she was doing, I really think. And we have, and we have five thousand dollars in the general budget for grant writing. That combined with the three hours, we should be getting some grants written. Did any, I'm done with this, but did everybody get the backup on the signage and the, and the legalization of the parking stuff we all agreed on?
I haven't opened the document yet, but I saw that you sent it.
Hmm?
I didn't open it yet, but I saw that you sent it.
Well, I sent my draft, it went to, well, it's not legalized. It's, do you know how hard it is to sit there and try and figure out one-nine-eight-nineteen-A-one-C? It's just, they oughta have code categories in a program where you just plug in. It'd be nice.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
You better, those are the parking codes.
I haven't heard of the email.
I'm a good journey.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
This was very nice, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks. I told you we would take them.